How you're trying to offset what those impacts may be. And then we looked at the lighting network as well, looking at what some of the concerns were out there. With, in general, the facilities looked good that were there. There's definitely some maintenance and repair issues that need to be done. If with that done, once that's completed, then there's just some infill work that needs to be done. So we prepared a concept plan that showed you the general areas where the lighting can be expanded to improve on the network. In general, the facilities that are out there, you have some decorative lighting and you have some standard high mast lighting. And you kind of maintain that same concept and suggested some areas on how to expand that. With that all done, we took those same 51 segments and we came up with an opinion of cost to do the improvements based on each one of those. And overall, the overall cost of all those improvements within the study area, a little over a one and a quarter million dollars, if it was all done at one time. The segments themselves, probably averaging cost about $25,000. But in some areas where you have some intense improvements, they're ranged from a couple of thousand up to almost $90,000 on one of the segments. Sharing that funding obviously is going to be a need. And whoever, however this proceeds, whether we could assist with that or as you get into final design and your consultant that selected at that point look at, I think considering some of the funding components would be very beneficial to help implement this plan. So in presenting the recommendations to you, there's a couple of key issues that we are looking at. First off, the way we understand from our coordination with city staff, the current annual available budget for this program is about $50,000 a year. So obviously that touches only about 5% of what this overall need would be. So there's either going to be some consideration on how to address additional funding through CIP or looking at allocations from some external sources and supplementing programs there. So we did prepare a summary of prioritization ranking based simply on if funding were there, this is the ranking of what we believe ought to be done. But since that funding is not there, we approached it a little bit differently in the summary here. So you have both of those to look at. First thing that we recommend is you approach those that seem to be more of a safety component. And we've addressed that through each of these disciplines. And so under the sidewalk, we highly recommend that you look at those areas that are damaged. And we know that some of that's already progressing. Some of that was even being done while we were out there. But take care of those initial corrections, whether it's a functional or a liability-based issue that, for some failing facilities. Then we suggest looking at some more either isolated areas or areas that are tied to another maybe CIP item, so they could be tagged to that. And then as you look comprehensively to try to provide the infill from some of the connectivity that's needed for the sidewalks. Relative to ramps, very similar. There are definitely some non-compliant and damaged ramps. We suggest that as their first priority. And then that's the second priority to implement the ramps that are tied to secondary ranking or other improvements as you move forward. For drainage, we recommend that there are a few structures out there that has some damage or some issues that need to be corrected. Those should be focused on first, then be looking at some of those that are tied to the implementation of the sidewalk. There's some sidewalks that have drainage issues where they approach a ramp and the ramp actually drops and it floods when they're... So there's some improvements that would be necessary to improve those. And then thirdly, if we were looking at something like a regional stormwater facility. For the lighting, we rank those also in a similar situation where you're correcting for safety and function. And then implementing where there's poorly lit areas and then expanding from there. So this is pretty much the summary of what our overall report covers, which is a little bit more in detail. But it's a guide for you to use as you look at your CIP or as you coordinate for future design projects. And with that, we thank you very much and turn it back over to the staff.
Thank you. Howard?
So we have the detailed report. And we do have $50,000 set aside. It's not going to get you very far. If, as city council, you want to move forward with this, our recommendation is that you forward this information onto the sales tax committee. This is a sales tax eligible project. It is infrastructure. And have this considered as part of the sales tax committee. There's also some grant opportunities that our staff can look into, knowing full well that if these are federal grants, we know what comes with a federal grant. But we can pursue that.
Jahah?
I was wondering if Chief Davis could speak on the urgency of the lighting situation. I think some of this, we can put sales tax, some of it I think we need to address immediately.
Chief Davis, are you there?
She's here.
She was just out in the lobby on the phone, I think.
Oh, is she on the phone? They're getting her. Okay, here she comes. That's okay. Jahah, you want to get?
Chief, you spoke yesterday on the urgency of the lighting. So I just, we're talking now about, like in this plan, they're talking about a long term. And I was saying that certain things needed to be urgently identified and certain things would be sales tax.
Yeah, Chief Pam Davis, Punta Gorda Police Department. One of the concerns brought up with the homeowners association for the historic district was the lighting at the area of Mylus and Ida. And so we went down there, we took some photos. It is very dark and there's dark patches and the sidewalk's kind of a little discombobulated. So when I spoke last night, I thought that area should be a priority when it comes to trying to get some lighting in there. It'll help, it helps with a lot of things.
Okay.
Safety and just overall being able to walk down the street without tripping over somebody. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
So in that area, I don't know what it would cost for us if we do a local option sales tax. We're not talking about anything until the year 2021?
January of 2021.
So if we want to do something earlier, we will have $50,000 in the 2020 budget that we could use to make some improvements in that particular area.
We could see what the lighting in that general area might cost and prioritize that.
Have we exhausted the funds this year?
David Hilson for the record. We're coming close to the 50,000 being completed. We're having one issue, but we should have that resolved by the end of the fiscal year.
So by the end of this fiscal year, we will have depleted, for the most part, those funds. And so we need to wait until October, basically.
Only thing is residents have been waiting 30 years for these particular things. And so I think it's not like that. I think we need to appropriate money for it. We do things like cutting, thatching and stuff. I think we can pay for this.
Did I hear council member say something about thatching? I fully concur. This is a moral obligation. This is a matter of safety and health. I think this takes precedent over code violation issues.
The thatch project is a drainage project and that is included in our budget. This is not included in our budget. If it is something that is local option sales tax available, would there be local option sales tax dollars that we could use to improve just that one area?
Right now, we would have to see, take a look at our list to see how we could, to see if it's a part of the list of projects. Remember, we did one regarding Marriage Point and Veterans Park because it's the same park.
Yes, I understand.
We can rationalize that.
Well, we're getting about, if I looked at the budget and in the CAFR, I think it shows that we're getting around $2.8 million a year now on local option sales tax dollars. So I don't know what the actual budgeted number was back when we looked at all of the projects. At one point in time, it was really $2 million. So it's increased substantially, so...
We do, you're correct.
Okay.
We have not bid out the Airport Road or the Cooper Street MRT. And we have a significant deficit in the Boca Grand Drainage Project that if we have extra sales tax dollars, we haven't even bid out Gilchrist Park Phase 2. So if there's extra sales tax dollars, we are trying to keep in mind that we may have to use them for those to finish some of those projects that we have yet to bid out. Just caution us.
I guess if you look at the timetable, this is May. So you're going to have to design something and you have to go out to bid. So you're probably not talking about an installation until...
Well, again, I know our process. I mean...
I'm just trying to help work through this. Because if we were to start designing something just for that one corner and we have to go through the procurement process, we're probably not going to be ready to do anything until...
October, probably.
So we're now into next year anyway. So that's when the money would, 50,000 would be available, if that's what it would cost. I don't know what it would cost.
I don't know what the estimate is.
I mean, we're looking at, I mean, she's saying lighting and sidewalks. So it probably would take that plus more.
Now we're talking sidewalks, yeah, sidewalks is going to add to it. I mean, we could push forward with at least getting the design done for at least the lighting portion. We just did some sidewalk work on Mylus. And we just completed it from, there was a missing section on Mylus that we just did complete that. Yeah, some of the sidewalks there are in tough shape. No question about it. The lighting...
I mean, that's most, most important is the lighting.
We could move forward with at least getting those designs ready for bid, bid it out and see what it costs. Because October's coming in a few months.
Vice Mayor Matthews, it looks like you want to say something.
Just certainly, safety is extremely important to the citizens of this community. That's first and foremost. I always believed in safety no matter where it is, whether it's on the roads, on the waterways. It doesn't matter. Safety is critical. That said, we should look at seeing if there's any 1% sales tax funds available. I think that would be the first place we could draw from if we had to for right now. Because if it's not in the budget, we can't get blood from a turnip. I mean, we're running on a very tight budget already and we have to figure out a way to make it get funded. So let's look at that first and see if there's a way we can use funds from that kitty, so to speak. And if not, then we have to go to Plan B. We'll have to figure out a way to make it happen. I don't disagree that we need to do the lighting and I think that should be the first thing we do. So from there, we move forward. Gary?
If perchance, some of these issues, to some extent, could be tempered and addressed prior to October, would it be possible to reallocate thatching funds towards that? Such as putting it some sidewalks right now that would be otherwise maintenance issues?
You're talking about the 1% sales tax?
No.
No, I'm talking about the budget. I'm talking about the thatching, you know, if there's money left in the thatching project still this year and there's part of these issues that could be tempered without having to go through the full process and waiting till next year's budget. Are there some of those issues that we could begin to address today or tomorrow by reallocating funds that are already earmarked for the thatching program that may not have been spent yet? That's my question.
It's the drainage program.
Yes. The swales.
To reallocate from drainage to this? That's your call.
I'm not in favor of that at this point. I think we have such an excellent program going. But I will, am in favor of us looking for the, if there are some additional local option sales tax dollars that we could supplement.
I'm in favor because of how crucial it is. This is a long delayed issue, which, I mean, we're talking like the whole time I've been on council, this has been apparent.
This is a safety and health issue. I think this should take precedent over a convenience issue, personally.
For the record, Rick Keeney, Director of Public Works. Just on the sidewalk issue, we're getting ready to pave Ida. And with paving the street, we have allocated monies in the paving program for ADA improvements. Meaning when we pave a road, we have to, if there's a sidewalk adjacent to that road, we have to then make sure our slopes, the ADA truncated domes are put in place. So once we pave Ida, which is going to be in the very near future, we're going to be able to fix the ADA issues with the ramps on the existing sidewalk on Ida. And if there's any trip hazards, meaning a quarter inch or higher in the sidewalk, that's a possible trip hazard, we have money allocated right now to fix those also. So we can address some of the sidewalk issues in the very near future after we get the road resurfaced, which is on the list. And we're trying to get a schedule from our resurfacing contractor.
I was referring to that only as it could be something other than. It could be lighting or whatever. But if it's something that needs to be addressed, that we know needs to be addressed and we could address it sooner rather than later by reallocation, I just think that's something that should be considered.
So where do you want to go with this?
I mean, I like Gary's idea. I think that this is a long-term issue. If there are funds that can address the most urgent issues, I think we should address the most urgent issues right now.
Would it be appropriate to ask staff to come back to us at our next council meeting with some potential areas that we could address in this manner?
I think that it's been pointed out, there's one intersection to address now. I'm in favor of this being, this entirety being a local option sales tax project to get this done. And, you know, and put it on as a priority on, if the local option sales tax committee were to do, you know, put this as a priority.
So you don't want to do anything now? You want to wait until 2020?
No, I think we could start something now, but I don't know that we can do the whole thing.
No, no one's saying that. The most urgent things and it wouldn't be just that corner. There, I mean, it's, that's like the crazy issue. We, there's some issues that we could do that are priorities. I think if staff were to come back with the most urgent issues and give us a proposal, I think that would be wise for us.
I mean, one question we have to ask is how much money is still available in the swale maintenance program anyway? I mean, if there's only $10,000 left anyway, then it's kind of a moot point.
I'm not in favor of reallocating any of the swale, the drainage dollars right now unless we, unless the project is completely completed for the year. But I think to have staff come back with, you know, to give us some information as to where would be the target areas.
I think target areas, then we can talk about the funding. The target area is costing that out and then we can...
Does that sound reasonable, Howard?
We can have you a cost estimate for the June 5th meeting for the lighting in the Mylus-Ida area. That's the, if that's the number one priority, we'll use this report. And we'll come up with an estimate. Have it on the June 5th agenda.
Yeah, sounds good.
And can we determine by that time if we can use any existing 1% sales tax funds?
Well, it's incumbent upon us that when we give you a proposal to spend money, that we have a proposal to fund it.
In one manner or another.
Yes.
We will do that.
Okay. Then we have a plan to move forward at this point.
June 5th. That's the next council meeting, right?
Are we also agreeing that this is something that we would want to put on a local option sales tax?
If possible.
At one point in time?
Much as possible.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the council agreed with that.
Yeah, as much as possible, I would agree to that.
Okay.
Could we have an estimate ready for the June 5th meeting for lighting based on the work that's been done?
I mean, I threw it out there. I hope we can...
Julie said yes. Julie said, "Yes," so, okay, Julie. Way to go, Julie. Okay, thank you very much. This is great. Excellent information for us to move forward in helping improve this much-needed area, so. Okay, next item, approval of the city's comprehensive annual financial report or the CAFR?
Kristen Simian from Finance. As y'all know, this was Dave's favorite thing to present.
It was. We should call it the, you know, name it after him, right?
I know. So this is for our fiscal year ended September 30th, 2018, so fiscal year 18. We do have our auditors here with us. Jeff Brown from Ashley and Brown Company are here. They have issued a clean opinion on the audit report. There were no prior year audit comments to be addressed and there were no current year auditor comments or recommendations to respond to. One major financial statement change that came about this year was our GAZB-75, which was accounting for other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB. We love our acronyms. And this is similar to when we had to start putting our pensions on our financial reports. So that was a big change. We had to add the liabilities for those types of items. And even though all our retirees pay for their benefits, it still has a financial impact because we only charge them the rate that an employee would pay as well. So that's all I have to say on that at this time. And if you have any questions?
Questions? I had a resident ask me that we used to, according to the resident, we used to put in there a chart that showed the increase in our funds from growth.
I'd have to go back and look.
In past. And I asked them if they could email me what one of those might look like. So like forwarded it to you because they were looking for that and they didn't find it in this. So, you know, the good news is somebody's reading it.
Yes.
Is it the CAFR or the budget?
The CAFR. Well, they were saying it was the CAFR.
We put it in the budget.
Maybe that's what they were miscon... Maybe that's what they're doing then.
And we put both our budget and our CAFRs on our city website. And we have at least 10 years worth, but I could always go back and look at some.
That could be, it could have been in the budget. Thank you for the clarification.
Do that in the budget.
Okay. So you're looking for an approval?
Yes, just to...
I shall move second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to approve the Dave Drury Memorial CAFR. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. You would be proud.
Well, he had nothing to do with this one.
I know. He would still like it, though, anyway.
Yeah, he would, he would.
So we will go to recommendations from city officers or city managers.
We just received 2.1 million for seawall reimbursement. So now the total is up to 15.2.
Cool.
Yay.
We're making progress. And next week and the week after, McHale and I will be at the county commission meetings regarding the Buckley's Pass assessments and MSBUs that we adopted. So now we have to assess the county properties as well. So we'll be there. That's it.
The attorney?
Yes.
You have something to share with us?
Well, I'd like to explain why I requested cancellation of the shade meeting for this afternoon. I'm going to try to be brief. And I also apologize, out of necessity, need to be somewhat vague because I'm still involved in fact-finding. And I don't want to make a statement that may not be entirely accurate. But, and I'll start off by saying that the Florida Bar has particular rules of professional responsibility that basically prohibits an attorney to represent two clients with opposing interests in the same action. And in a situation where there's a large firm and an attorney in the firm represents one party, the, another attorney in the firm is precluded from representing an adverse party. That's a conflict. It's different than conflict of interest that we experience in other types of state ethical considerations, but it is recognized as a conflict. If there is a conflict, that conflict can be resolved by both parties knowingly waiving that conflict. Some conflicts are not wavable. And so the resolution would be for, in this case, the firm to be, the city to be represented by other council that doesn't have a conflict.
Are you telling us that your firm is representing?
No, 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 no. So that's why I started that out by saying...
I thought that's where you were going.
No, it's not.
All right, so without getting into too much specificity, after the city had filed its liens on Winter Park Dodge and after we filed the lawsuit to foreclose on those liens, there was a, an institution that acquired a secured interest in the property that we were seeking to foreclose on. We aren't representing that institution nor do we have any representation with respect to Winter Park Dodge or Platte. Recently, another institution acquired the secured interest of that other bank, also after everything else. And I just have discovered that our firm may represent, well, does represent that institution. I don't know if they have representation that would extend into this particular situation that would create a conflict. So that's what I have to resolve. And I've been in conflict, I've been in contact with the Florida Bar, at least initially. And so I'm not prepared to say that there is a conflict. I'm not prepared to say that there isn't a conflict. And I'm not prepared to say, if there is a conflict, how it can be resolved. So that's why I canceled the meeting. Hopefully I'll have the answers that I need for the next city council meeting and give a recommendation as to what action to take if necessary that may involve, if one side or the other, if both sides, the city and the potential conflicting institution would agree to waive the conflict of interest in writing, we can go forward. If not, we have, for example, the Person Law Firm that we have on retainer for Code Enforcement Board because there is always a natural conflict that may arise. As I'm the city prosecutor and can't advise the Code Enforcement Board, so they are the attorneys that avoid that conflict. They would be the natural to take over if it became necessary to take over. And so I'm putting the shade meeting on hold. It's, the likelihood is that I'll have a recommended answer or resolution by the next city council meeting, in which case the likelihood is that perhaps the shade meeting could be conducted in the second meeting in June. But stand by, I'll let you know whether that be the case or not. But no, not representing Platte, not representing Winter Park Dodge. And that's why I'm saying, there may not even be a conflict here. But in abundance of caution, I need to get it all resolved before we move forward.
And I thought the sunshine law was the weirdest thing I'd ever seen.
I've run into this before in situations where I was seeking legal advice locally. And our community is small. And so I would run into those situations where, you know, I was seeking someone and they go, "We can't help you because we're already working with somebody else," and those kind of things. So I understand that.
Well, fortunately, because fortunately or unfortunately, being with a large firm, we have a lot of clients. And we have a very detailed and complex computerized system to avoid conflicts. But you usually do that at the beginning of the litigation. And none of the parties that I'm now concerned with are involved, were involved in the litigation at the time that we ran our conflicts check. And because, as you can imagine, a very large financial institution has a whole lot of clients, it wouldn't immediately pull up when it arose. So once I became aware that there is a problem, I'm bringing it to your attention and letting you know that we need to resolve it.
Just remember, we were first in line.
Absolutely.
I, yeah, kind of like, okay, so what, we're, it's kind of like, well, why is it that we would need to change? Why would, why wouldn't it be the other...
They're a bigger client.
Well, as I said, there may be, there may be an opportunity to resolve it without having to go down that...
Okay.
Just for clarification, does he not own this building anymore?
No, he does. But he took, whenever you take a loan out, there's a secured interest on that. And at the time that we filed, so currently, when we filed our lawsuit, we did a title search to see if there were any liens that would be of a higher priority than ours. And perhaps, and there weren't any at the time. And perhaps, and there weren't any at the time. And speculation, my speculation is that he took out or refinanced or whatever and another institution then had a later created lien, which is subordinate to ours, on the property.
So how could he even get refinancing with, when we have liens on all this property?
And so I asked that, I asked that question as well. And it may be, and it may be helpful to, it may be helpful to answer that question too because there might be some misconception at the end of the day, what the city is going to end up with if we are successful in our foreclosure. I don't want to go too far down that road. But nevertheless, our liens on the property are 125, 150, you know, but the property is worth much more than that.
Sure.
And so there are lending institutions that are willing to lend money, recognizing that there is 150,000 that may be against their interest, but they still have a valuable property. So if we ultimately are successful in our foreclosure, we are not going to own the property outright. The bank, the court will put it up for a forced sale to make sure that we get what we are owed. And assuming that the sale goes for more than what we are owed, then the other secured interest would get all of that. So that's why there may still be a secured interest on the property that were acquired after our liens were created.
Unbelievable.
Well, I know that.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. As the slip, slip not turns.
So I apologize for any inconvenience that this may cause, but we'll have more, I'll have more information available by the next city council.
You can make a great pickleball complex.
Doesn't it?
Except that we wouldn't get it for 150,000.
No.
Oh, gosh.
Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Wow. City clerk.
Yes, just a couple of boards and committee items under vacancies. We have a three-year term as an alternate on the planning commission and an unexpired term on the police officer's pension board. Under nominations, for the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, we have Valerie Colbert listed as interested in serving. We neglected to include the resume of Adrian Andrea. She currently serves as an alternate and we, staff would like you to consider her when you make your nominations for this seat.
Nominate both.
Thank you.
Do you need a second for that?
Second.
No.
Oh, you don't, okay.
And lastly, under appointments, we have two four-year terms on the Puntagorda Housing Authority. We have four eligible applicants. And your voting sheets are coming around, you're voting for two, please.
And the appointees are Ms. Getz and Ms. Washington.
That's all I have.
Yes, it's still, it's still, it's still the same. Oops.
We're going to have to send you to, back to school to count ballots.
As I keep saying, if I was good at math, I'd be a physician.
They don't have ballot counting in law school?
Law school, yeah.
Okay.
He's not hired by the supervisor of elections.
All right, so under policy and legislation, as I mentioned earlier, that I was asked Monday night if I would accept being the keynote speaker for the Unity Around the Lake event on Friday night and because there has been a change of plans. And so I was honored to accept. And I was also asked if I would please make sure to invite all the rest of my colleagues to join us. It will be at 6:00 PM at the South County Regional Park. And I really don't know more details than that, other than I think there's going to be food.
Oh, okay, the dairy.
Yes. So for those of you that want free food, there will be food and mosquitoes probably, but anyway. And it's, there'll be a number of people there, dignitaries, sheriff, our chief Pam Davis will be there. And so I would, you know, welcome you to participate along with me. And I know this is our last meeting in May. Looking forward to the Memorial Day event on May 27th. I think, I know that that'll be a great event and I do plan to be there, so.
Yes, I'd invite all the council members to be present for that.
Yes. And we have a number of ribbon cuttings and things like that going on as well in our community, so. With that, council member comments, Jaha?
All right, two. One, I wanted to invite everyone to the Emancipation Day Celebration at Blanchard House Museum on Saturday between 10:00 and 1:00. I won't be there, I'm in Leadership, Florida until Saturday afternoon, so. Two, this is not in the county, but it pertains to us. There is, there is, and I would say, who keeps our city from having the negative effects of our very interesting paradox of being the second highest per capita income county with a 40% poverty level? The three organizations that probably keep us so we don't feel this the most will be our Puntagorda Police Department, Charlotte County Sheriff's Office, and Bread of Life Mission right off of Scott Street. Bread of Life Mission is by, they don't have funds to comply right now with the code thing. And it's very crucial the community support them because the reason why we do not see massive homelessness, the amount which actually exists in the county, is because she takes care of about 1,500 people in East County and takes care of about 5,000 people during the holidays. And pretty much, we don't see the condition our people are actually in. And she doesn't take government funds, so she's able to do her mission without being impeded. And just wanted to say that in the event that she closes, we will feel it almost immediately in our city because she keeps things kind of as they are and helps people in the place they are. And so this is something which I do think is very important, that we do support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yeah, I attended the NPO board meeting last week and I'm happy to report that FDOT has taken very quick action on the Akia Stah 41 intersection. They have tentatively agreed to put a left turn arrow on the eastbound lane coming out of PGI to turn north onto 41. And they are looking at the options for the westbound side because, number one, that is a single lane coming off of that road and they would have to put a second lane in, which would require land acquisition as well as railroad approval, which could take a long time. So they're looking at it and they're going to be meeting with the county and the railroad to talk about the options to put an extra lane there so they can put a turn arrow to turn south onto 41 southbound. So they took very quick action on that and they're being very proactive about it. So I'm real happy about that because there's been some pretty bad accidents. Second, the traffic light, even though it's not in the city, the traffic light at Vermont Road and 31 has been activated and they've already had one minor accident there because people weren't paying attention. But that traffic light is in place. They are working on the permanent roundabout that's going to be put in there within the next few years. But at least for now, we've got some traffic mitigation going on there, which is good. And Carmelita Street intersection improvements are moving forward and they're still looking at 2020 to 2021 timeframe. So that will also be a safety improvement for that intersection. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carrie?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Councilmember Y?
Two quick things. One, in addition to what council member Cummins was saying, there is a high poverty and homeless rate in our county, as you folks are aware and our council has been generous in the past of donating commuters to the gap program. There are 450 identified homeless students in our school system within our county. And my wife has been very much involved in that mentoring program. That program is doing very well, so I'm not making a pitch for funds for that. But Jaha does make a very good point. That's number one. And number two, on the 26th, there'll be the Run to the Wall and General Carr and I will be up there together with those folks. The question is, is whether we ride our car or, because neither one of us is going to ride a motorcycle. But there will be a service at the memorial on the 26th with the guys on the Harleys, so.
The one thing I also learned a number of years ago is when they count the homeless population for students, they include if a student is living with their grandparents. If they're not living in their home with their parents, they're considered homeless.
It may even be a cousin or an aunt, there may be. But that's where the expression couch surfing comes from. It may be just a case where they have been eliminated from their home and their family.
Right.
For whatever reason.
It doesn't mean they're living in the woods.
No, but an awful lot of them are.
There are, there are some, yes.
Don't, there are several tent cities in our county.
Okay, anything else? All right, now it's time for citizens' comments. You can come to the podium. You have three minutes to discuss anything that you may want to. So please come to the podium. I'm not seeing a rush. Okay, then, meeting adjourned.